Hi, good morning and welcome to the June 5th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin Cedric County's Public Information Officer. This morning, I'd like to invite Susan Erlinwine to talk about an upcoming event this weekend.
Morning Susan.
Good morning. Thank you Kate for the introduction. Most of us have some sort of chemicals sitting around the house that we no longer use. Could be old gasoline, used oil in the garage, could be fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, could be household cleaners or old paint. So this is a good time to try to get rid of these materials. We do have a household hazardous waste facility. It's located at 801 Stillwell and it's open from 9 to 5 Tuesday through Friday and 9 to 3 on Saturdays. But to better serve our community, we also offer five remote household hazardous waste collection events where we go out in the community to make it easier for people to get rid of this material when it's no longer needed. This Saturday, we have our first household hazardous waste remote event and it's located at Textron Beach Craft Parking Lot. That's at 10059 East Central. It's about half a mile east of Webb Road on the south side of Central. So we'd encourage anyone who lives in that area, whether it's in eastern Wichita, one of the small cities, or out in the county, to bring your unwanted materials there this Saturday. Now I am referring to cleaners, solvents, propane bottles, fluorescent bulbs, that sort of material. If you're not sure what is or is not accepted, please go to the Cedric County website, cedriccounty.org, Environmental Resources, and look at our list of what can be accepted. Or call 660-7464 for more information. We'd be happy to see anybody there again. That's this Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions?
Okay.
I just want to echo how easy it is to turn in hazardous waste either over at Stillwell Location or at one of our remote locations. Last Thursday, I had a meeting with Mr. Spears and so I had some hazardous waste at my house and said, "Well, since I'm going to be close, I'll just drop that off." It took me about two minutes to drop it off before I hit it over and wasn't even late for a -- well, Mr. Spears was late today's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and a few more comments. Since we are in the middle of Riverfest and Commissioners, you are invited there for lunch today. I'd like to talk about how Cedric County is sponsoring that event. We are sponsoring care stations and both EMS and non-EMS employees are staffing those this week. So if anyone has fallen down and scraped their knee, or has a lost child or a lost parent, we're able to help and facilitate a fun event for everyone. Also Thursday night, tomorrow night at Riverfest, we have an employee appreciation event. And then any kids or any families can come to Kate's Touch a Truck and we'll have a host of Cedric County vehicles there as well. On the agenda this morning Commissioners, we have meeting minutes, several advisory board appointments, a consideration of a grant for the Regional Forensic Science Center. You'll receive a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts, and then there's a brief fire agenda. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you Kate. And while we've got Kate at the microphone, I want to make sure that everyone knows that a week or so ago, Kate was named one of 40 Under 40 for exemplary leadership here in Cedric County. We want to congratulate her very much.
Thank you. Who's yours?
Well, thank you. And Commissioner Meitzner and I, we're trying to find out if they'll start at 80 Under 80.
I'm sure you could put the ask in there.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone that's joining us today in the audience and those that are joining us on KPTS and online today. And thank you very much for being here. With that, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order for Wednesday, June 5th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Rebecca Gultrimore, First United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us join together in prayer. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice. We come today to center ourselves for the work that is ahead this morning. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this county in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to seek the welfare of this county. For just as the prophet Jeremiah was advised, to build houses and plan to stay, plant gardens and eat what they produce, and to pray for them. For in its welfare, you will find your welfare. Today, O God, we pause and we pray for this county. We pause for just one moment to cherish the void of noisiness, debates, and the world's anxieties. We pause to align our work for the welfare of this county. Grant these leaders, these servants of the county, wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right, good, and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen, and wait patiently and receptively to all voices that are present. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, the Spirit of justice, and the Spirit of love. This, we pray, in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good, right, and true. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here this morning. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda, but if anyone's in the audience would like to speak, now would be an opportunity. Seeing no one, next item please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of May 8th, 2019.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from May 8th and also May 15th. I moved that we approve both of those items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item please.
Appointments. Item C, accept the resignation of Monica Marks from the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Good morning Commissioners. Mike Papoun, interim county councillor. First item here is to accept the resignation of Monica Marks, Commissioner Lacy Cruz's appointment to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board. Recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
I move we accept the resignation.
Thank you. I'll second that. We have two seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item please.
Item D, resolution reappointing Brian Powers to the Wichita-Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Good morning again Commissioners. Items D, E, and F all involve appointments, or reappointments, to the Cedric County Access Advisory Board. This is a board that joins in with the City of Wichita to deal with accessibility issues in Cedric County and advise county manager and our ADA coordinator on accessibility issues. The first item D is a reappointment, Chairman Dennis's appointment to the Access Advisory Board of Brian Powers. Item E is the reappointment of Stephen Walters, Commissioner House, reappointment to the Access Advisory Board. And item F is an appointment by Commissioner Meitzner of Sanford Alexander to the Access Advisory Board. Actually, Mr. Alexander's been on the board for a number of years. Could also be considered a reappointment, but it's a new appointment for Commissioner Meitzner. All three resolutions are in proper form and I'd ask that you consider all three items and approve them.
Thank you. I will move that we approve items Delta Echo and Foxtrot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold is here. Do we have any of those individuals in the audience to be standing today?
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Cedric County Access Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Good morning sir, thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. I am honored to be reappointed to the Accessibility Board. The Accessibility Board is a board that deals with different areas of problems within the county. We deal with poking issues, handicap and disabled people that have problems. They come to us where we can take them up in our meeting and discuss what we need to do and how we can make things better for them. And I have also recently found out that I am serving with the Kansas Law Enforcement Torturing Committee. And what that is, is a group of officers that has gotten together and they run the torch for Special Olympics. And the committee goes out and raises money for Special Olympics. So if you guys ever get a chance, come out and watch some Special Olympics athletes compete. And it's a lot of fun. And we enjoy the excitement that we get to have. I got to carry the Olympic torch at opening ceremonies this year, so that was an honor. So I would like just to say, thank you very much for the reappointment.
Thank you sir. Thanks for continuing to serve. We appreciate it.
Chairman.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell.
Just want to clarify. Thank you Chairman. I believe this is Stephen Walters, is that correct?
Yes.
The reason I ask that is because I've only got the chance to meet him a few times and I just want to say thank him for his service. He is my appointment. I think I've, he's been on that board quite a long time. He does a tremendous job. If everybody would just know that he is a really great guy and he's very, very passionate about this board. And I just want to say thank you Stephen for your service to the county. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Next item please.
Item G, resolution appointing Shane Gross to the Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Papoun.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county councillor. This is Commissioner Cruz's appointment to Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. She is recommending the appointment of Shane Gross. Ms. Gross will be replacing John Daly, who was former Commissioner Ranzel's appointment to this board. Resolutions in proper form. We'd ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
I just want to say before I make a motion that I'm excited about this appointment. I also want to thank you very much, Mr. Papoun, for all of your work to get this sort of fixed. I know that there was, for those of you who don't know, when a commissioner gets appointed, some of these appointments don't match the commissioner's term. And so that was something that we had to kind of fix, or maybe realign, I should say. But the other thing that's really exciting about this is anybody who's been to the Planning Commission knows the makeup of the commission and it's pretty much the same type of person. We won't say what type of person it is, I think we all know, representing our governmental body, but I think it's important to have women represented. So Shane will be the second woman on there. I think there's one other right now. So I'm excited, woman, I mean, I'm excited to have her on there. She is the owner of The Anchor, who has a really killer Reuben. I love that, with this awesome Russian mustard. So if you guys haven't had that lately, you need to hop over there and the meat market. So I just want to say that I'm excited about this and I make a motion, we adopt the resolution appointing her to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but I'd like to do that after, if there's a second.
Okay, well, I'd second the motion then.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I do have a question for, I think councillor, councillor Papoun perhaps. Can you talk about what Commissioner Cruz just talked about a minute ago? What did we change that allowed this type of removal from this board? How did that happen again?
Yes, Commissioner Howell would be happy to and to address kind remarks of Commissioner Cruz. Actually, Justin Wagner and Karen Powell did most of the legwork on that, but I appreciate your comments. Almost all of our boards, Commissioner, the term of appointments end when a new commissioner comes on board and new commissioners get to appoint their choice for a board. In this particular case, we thought there was some ambiguity in the way that our joint ordinance resolution was written to, on whether or not Commissioner Ranzel, former Commissioner Ranzel's appointment was term limited upon the election of Commissioner Cruz. And so we passed a new joint amendment to the joint Cedric County-City of Wichita agreement with, for Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And in doing so, we made it very clear that once a new commissioner comes on board, that that commissioner gets to appoint whoever he or she wants to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And that is what we did. This joint resolution passed this governing body, passed the City of Wichita City Council. It went to the Attorney General's Office for approval. The Attorney General's Office approved the interlocal agreement. It was filed with the Secretary of State and Register of Deeds and is now an official interlocal agreement between the City of Wichita and Cedric County.
Very good. All right, well, I just have a couple of comments and I'll vote, but yes, my personal philosophy is if someone's doing a good job on one of these boards and they're faithfully serving and they are, they serve with honor and they are putting the time in. By the way, this is one of those boards that requires probably the most time out of any board that we have. I think they meet every other week and some of these meetings are very, very long. And so it's a very important board for this community. But I happen to, I have visited that board numerous times and seen the performance of John Daly. He is an exceptional individual regardless of his gender. I think that he's a, he's a great person and I love the fact that he has served with honor on that board for so long. His appointment ends in 2021 and I know he does want to serve. And so I, this has nothing to do with any negative comment about the person that's being nominated this morning. And we're voting on here in a moment. I love The Anchor. It's a great restaurant and I'm sure, I'm sure she'll do a great job as well. But I just want to say that I appreciate the service of John Daly and I hate to see him removed from this board simply because of something that's not within his control. So with that, I probably vote no this morning. Thank you Chairman.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
The other thing that I want to point out, just quite frankly, is representation matters. So regardless of whether someone is doing a good job and just because they've served for a long time doesn't mean that we shouldn't switch things up. I think it's important to not maintain and do things as business as usual and that's kind of what I'm doing. So I appreciate your comments. The other thing I want to point out about Shane is she is a methodical researcher. One, one thing that I was really impressed with her is just how, I mean, how many questions she had about this board and how I think that she's going to do a very good job in researching all topics. So I think it's important that we understand the fact that when someone comes on to this board, the appointments that are made align with that person's values. And I think that that's what I'm doing and I appreciate your comments. And again, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
We do have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Just a final comment. Again, this is no, this is nothing about the person we're voting on this morning. She's, I'm sure she'll do a tremendous job and, and all of that. Just again, every commissioner can do this however they want to. It is your, your absolute right to do this and that's, that's fine. I just want to say my philosophy once again, I think for the most part, all of the appointments were in place before I became a commissioner. If they wanted to continue serving and they did a good job, I just reappointed them. And I, I generally wanted people from my district and so I have done that. I actually contemplated replacing the person that serves on MAPC for a short time because I just felt like it should reflect maybe more of my own values and actually made the news. And I reconsidered that and I went and reappointed, reappointed the person that had been serving on there with honor. And he does, he does a really, really good job on that board. And so with that, I just want to say, my personal philosophy is if someone wants to serve and they're doing a good job and they serve with honor and they're putting the time in, I would love to, at least for me, my appointments will continue to serve as long as they want to. So thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Well, just a couple of comments then, since there have been quite a few on this. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Cruz that appointee of a member that's been elected to this board, their appointees need to reflect the values of the, of the person that was elected. That's why we're elected. Second of all, I served on the MAPC for nine years and I did serve with John Daly. But I do want to make sure I point out that while I was serving on the MAPC, I was a city appointee, not a county appointee. During that period of time, the county, the way that we appoint from here, each one of us have an individual appointee, so that's five, but there are seven people that represent the county on the MAPC. Two of those people are appointed at large, which means the entire board appoints two of them. While I was serving on there and with the previous commission, which I believe Commissioner Howell was serving on at that time, they removed Mitch Mitchell from the MAPC, somebody that we respect greatly. And I replaced him with what the board at that time thought that met their values. The City of Wichita thankfully didn't agree with that and the mayor reappointed Mitch Mitchell as his appointee to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. So he continued to serve until his health got to the point that he could not serve any longer. So I don't want to dispute what Commissioner Howell says, but I believe he was part of the commission that did remove someone from there because they didn't align with their thoughts. So with that, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And Mr. Arnold, would you like to swear our new appointee to the MAPC in?
Good morning Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. Right. I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office as Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commissioner, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say anything.
I wasn't planning on speaking. I do realize spending time on this board is going to take about 10 to 16 hours a week and I do read a lot. I also own over 100 acres in Butler County. I own commercial property on Douglas that I've owned longer than I've owned my own bar. I've been self-employed most of my life. And so I've sat and gone to a lot of zoning issues. I've been to a lot of meetings. I've gone in and sat and watched things are happening. So I do understand who I'm replacing. Daly is one of those men that when he sits there, he's got a stack of books. He's super researched.
Yeah.
And so when I first saw him, I was like, "Oh my God, this is the guy I'm replacing." So I do know what I'm getting into. This position fascinates me. Karen and I also politically don't align, but we have a lot of the same values. And so we can get to the same point, you know, and I'm very, very fascinated about taking this position. I respectfully take Daly's position. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. We got a couple of comments. Commissioner Meitzner.
Shane, thanks for agreeing to serve. I just, when I was on City Council, I had some appointments to that, to that board and it's not, it wasn't unusual for somebody to get into the job and they said, "Oh, you know, this is more than what I thought I could do," or "It doesn't align with, with my work schedule," whatever. And, and they had to, they, I had one that had to resign just because it was too much. So although you feel like a pressure to do that, I mean, you're, you're welcome to serve as long as you perform with Lacy's approval too. And, and, but know that sometimes it gets a little overwhelming and it's not unusual for somebody to resign from, from that board or even other boards because it just didn't, didn't fit. So, but good luck.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Although I voted no this morning, it was, that has nothing, again, I want to be absolutely clear, I respect Commissioner Cruz and her right to nominate anybody that she wants and this is totally in her, in her prerogative to do this today and I support her totally for that. And I support you too, Ms. Gross. I think you're going to be, you'll do a great job. So this has nothing to do with any negative feelings towards you in any way. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job there and I appreciate you for the work you do in our community and I love your restaurant. So with that, I just want to say I have confidence in you and I'm sorry I only get one vote this morning, but I wanted to make sure I was clear that I, I do think that ideally we, if someone is serving with, with these, in one of these positions that's doing such a good job, I'd just love to see them stay there as much as possible. I told, but I get it and I want to make sure you understand, I hope you're not offended as I, as I voted no this morning. It's not about you. It's okay.
100% flying colors would be scary.
Thank you so much. All right.
Mr. Cruz.
I just want to make one final point that, you know, I may be new to this, but I do not question anybody else's appointments. Because I trust that the people that elected you are going to trust in you to make a good decision. So I just want to put that in the record that, give me a shot, okay? Give me a shot and make sure that you understand that we're not doing things as business as usual around here anymore. That's how things are going to be while I'm sitting in this chair. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just time to add my thoughts on this deal. I've been, I've been, I've been around politics for a few years now at differing levels and I have never seen somebody, an appointee, refuse to resign when somebody new comes on board. It just, I'm spellbound that Mr. Daly would want to serve when I believe Ms. Cruz or at least staff had made it apparent to him that they didn't want him serving in that position. It's, it's mind-boggling, truly, that, that you'd want to serve. I mean, I've offered to resign from positions because new people have come in. I think that's the classy thing to do and the responsible thing to do is you should let somebody that gets elected choose their own people. So I actually feel terrible that Commissioner Cruz was put in this position, that she would have to, we would have to change a complete resolution between the city and the county because one person refused to step down. It's, I, I can't believe it and I feel terrible for Commissioner Cruz that she even had to be put in that position because I, I've never seen it. And I'm sure in all the years Commissioner, or Chairman Dennis served on the MAPC, he probably never saw anything like that either. Because generally you serve at the will of the Commissioner that appoints you or that successor in that seat. So anyway, just, just my thoughts on the situation. And congratulations Shane, and you've seen me in your restaurant, you know I love it. And, and I think it's great that we're getting some more diversity on the MAPC to be more representative of, you know, Cedric County and everything we're doing.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Well, Ms. Gross, thank you very much for serving, truly. As I said, I served on that for nine years, so I know what you're going to be getting yourself into.
They require what the hours that it takes us. It's not lately.
But it is truly the one place where that you know exactly what we're doing for development in this entire region, is you see every single thing that comes through. You're going to see when the economy turns down that you don't have much to do. You're going to see when the economy starts booming that you've got a lot to do. So it's a, it's a job that ebbs and flows really based on the economy, but we appreciate your service. And I'm sorry that there's been so much discussion over one appointment because normally they are very, very smooth. I am also very disappointed that one commissioner would vote against another commissioner's appointment because that's the first time I've seen it since I've served on this board. So you should have been appointed unanimously and that is the way it should have happened. The same person that just voted against you did remove some very qualified people from that board because they didn't agree with their political ask, their political views. So I'm disappointed this morning that you did not get five votes.
Honestly, I think the timing worked out because in God's plan, I had to be available to help some friends that have been in and out of the hospital the last couple of months. to help some friends that have been in and out of the hospital the last couple of months. And had I had that, it would have been harder for me to do that job or to help them. So, for me, it was perfect timing.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, welcome, and are you going to serve on Thursday?
Yes.
Well, very good. You're going to be busy.
Oh, yeah. I'm excited.
I've seen the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was quite a while for one thing, but Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Resolution Reappointing Kelly Arnold to the Sejuac County Grievance Board.
Commissioners, Michael Pupun, Interim County Counselor. Both Items H and I are appointments to the Sejuac County Grievance Board. This is a board that hears employee, employment matters involving certain demotions, terminations, that sort of thing. First item, Item H, is to appoint, for the elected official's position, Mr. Arnold to the board. And the second item, Item I, is to appoint Alora Forchy to replace the spot formerly held by Scott Hadley as the alternative member, alternate member for the department head position. This board has an employee member, elected official member, and a department head position. Both resolutions on H and I are in proper form, and I ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Pupun. Move to approve Hotel in India?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And Mr. Arnold, who is going to swear you in?
I'll be standing in the middle of it. I thought about voting against Kelly. I wouldn't have been offended, I've been all right. All right. I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sejuac County Grievance Board alternate department head, so help me God.
Absolutely. I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, you don't have any comments this morning?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. No comments from Mr. Kelly either. Very good. All right. Next item, please.
New business, Item J. Consideration of Acceptance of a Paul Coverdale National Forensic Science Improvement Grant Award in the Amount of $155,017 for Funding of Equipment.
Morning, Dr. Rorig.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Dr. Tim Rorig, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center. Before you, you have a request to accept a grant award, the Paul Coverdale Grant Award for $155,000 and some change. This grant provides federal funding to crime laboratories and medical examiner's offices to improve the quality and timeliness of forensic science and medical examiner services. Since we have a couple of new commissioners, I thought I'd take a brief moment to give a little history of the Coverdale Grant. The Coverdale Grant became public law in December of 2000, and since then, we've been receiving those federal funds that have been administered through the governor's office. The process is each year, the State of Kansas is allocated funding, federal dollars, for forensic laboratories within the state. The three directors of the laboratories, the State Police Laboratory, the KBI, the Johnson County Sheriff's Laboratory, and the Regional Forensic Science Center, we basically get together, develop a state plan for improvement of forensic services within the state. We have an agreement, a tentative agreement, between the laboratories on how to split the allocation that's provided to the governor's office. The governor's office then submits the grant after they approve our distribution of the funds. Then, after a period of time, the funds are rewarded back down to the state. The governor's office releases that to the three entities. To accept these funds, we have to sign a variety of assurances, talking about how, yes, we're an accredited laboratory, yes, we will follow good laboratory practices. I'm required, or the designate is required, to submit progress reports on how we utilize the funds and how those funds are helping either reduce backlog or enhance capacity or enhance capabilities. The funds that were allocated to Sejuac County this federal fiscal year were a little over half of the funds allocated to the State of Kansas. The intent is to buy a refurbished liquid chromatograph mass spectrometer and to help you out, just call it an LCMS, it's a lot easier to say. With that equipment, we'll be able to streamline some processes, reduce analysis time, but most importantly, we're going to use this to expand our opioid testing panel to verify that we do not have a bunch of new opioids coming into our community. So, with that, I would stand for any questions, and if none, I would recommend that you approve the acceptance of the grant, authorize the chairman or his designate to sign all necessary documents, including the grant assurances, progress reports, financial-related documents, and authorize the establishment of budget authority as provided in the financial considerations of this request.
Thank Dr. Rorig. I know that you've been around each one of the commissioners and briefed us in detail on what the device is going to do to help streamline your operation, and I don't see any questions whatsoever as a result. You must have done a very good job of briefing us.
Thank you.
So, I would like to move that we approve the Cloverdale, Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on May 30, 2019.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, sir, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. On May 30, the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts was conducted, and we have four items for your approval this morning. Item number one is the 3/4-inch SB2 aggregate for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Cornejo Materials, and this is for an initial purchase in the amount of $19,750, and then we will establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is the data communication products, and this is for information technology services, and this recommendation is to utilize the NASPO Master Agreement, and this is through the State of Kansas contracts 42860B and 42860G, and this contract is from June 1, 2019 through May 31, 2020 with additional renewals. Item number three is the on-call plumbing services for facility maintenance, and this recommendation to accept both proposals from the Professional Mechanical Contractors Incorporated and also the Commercial Trade Services LLC, and this is to establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item number four, is Boiler Number Two, tube repair and replacement, again, for facilities maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Combustion Controls Incorporated, and this is an amount of $25,132. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Joe. I don't see any questions whatsoever from the commission. Move to approve the Boards of Bids and Contracts. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items L through P this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve Lima through Pampa?
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Do we have anything today, Mr. Pupun?
Not really, Mr. Chairman, but I will tell you that the county manager has arranged for our county lobbyist, contract lobbyist, Jason Watkins, to appear before the county commissioners at a staff meeting on June 18 to give an update on legislative issues involving the county in the last session.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Pupun, on legislative? Seeing nothing? Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
So, any, we got lights everywhere. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let anybody who's interested know, I'm going to host a town hall out at the Krista McAuliffe K-8 Academy next Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30. This is at 2055 South 143rd Street East, and the primary reason why I'm holding it next weekend in that location, excuse me, is there's a lot of construction going on in the area, and we want to talk about some of the planning, some of the designs, and answer any questions people might have about what already has happened, what is happening, and what's coming up. And so, of course, I'll probably give a brief county update and take any questions that might show up there, but it's primarily for the area around 143rd Street and Harry, but anybody who's interested that wants to attend that meeting is certainly welcome. Again, that's at 2055 South 143rd Street. That's the Krista McAuliffe K-8 Academy next Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I just have a couple, I have three points I'd like to make. The first one, going back to the planning, we all voted January 31 unanimously to enact that resolution to change the appointment, so I just want to say that for the record. Second, I'm having a Citizens Advisory Board coming up this Monday, this coming Monday, right? Yes. At, where am I having it at? Fairmount Coffee, yes, thank you, at 17th and in between Oliver and Hillside. And lastly, I'm a little tired this morning because I got in last night at midnight from San Antonio, Texas, and I just really want to talk about, just briefly, about my tour. I went and toured the Center for Healthcare Services and also the Haven for Hope. This is a 22-acre campus in San Antonio, Texas, that is designed around mental health care, substance abuse counseling. They have families that live there. I mean, I toured the Restoration Center. I toured the jail. I toured Haven for Hope, which was really, Chairman Dennis has been there. It was incredible. The one thing that I will say is that we are doing a lot of what this campus is doing in our community. It's just kind of spread out. So, we are way ahead of the curve, is what they kept telling us. I just want to tell a little story about a woman who shared her story with us. Her name is Cindy, and at the age of 38, she decided that she had had enough of using heroin. And the reason why, she was, she had just injected an 80-year-old man, and he was about to die, and she thought to herself, wow, maybe I need to change my life around. And the reason why this 38-year-old woman was using heroin was because her mother had abused her as a very young child. She didn't feel loved. She was kind of thrown out of her house at a very young child and was using from the age of 14 years old. Her story is not unique to San Antonio. We have those stories here, too, and just because we don't hear about them or because we live in our own little bubbles doesn't mean they don't exist. And so, when people say, pull yourself up by your bootstraps, well, if you're abused as a young child and have no other way of knowing, this woman said she didn't even know how to cross this street properly. I mean, there are things in this community that we can fix. No, we're not going to fix them all, but what this little trip showed me and what all of my exhaustion this morning is about, because that was an intense couple of days of learning about how people are combating homelessness, combating addiction. Those are the things that we can work on. I'm so very thankful I had a chance to meet Wendy Hummel, who is our Substance Abuse Coordinator, and Jennifer Wilson, our Behavioral Health Community Collaborator. So, those two positions are funded by the county and I think some other funds. But I'm so excited to meet the people in our community that are focused on this because we have a ton of people in this community who are doing the work every single day. The one thing that they did say was the most important was collaboration, and this community down in San Antonio has over 150 providers in their community, nonprofit providers that provide these services. So, the one thing that they have to do is collaborate. I met with Leon Evans, who is one of the founders of this, yesterday morning. He was an incredible guy that I wish I would have had more time. I was feverishly taking notes at every single thing he said. I wish I would have just recorded my conversation because he is full of knowledge about what it really takes to help people get the help that they need. So, over, I think there is, there's a conference call at like 10 o'clock today about homelessness. There's a summit coming up in a couple of weeks. Get involved, understand what's going on in our community, because there is a lot going on, but are we all siloed to the point where we're not really, there's a lot of people doing the same things? And how can we come together as a community to really help the people who need help? So, I will be quiet now, but I'm just so excited, and I'm very thankful that I had this opportunity to go down and see the Center for Healthcare Services and the Haven for Hope, because, you know, the people that I saw were getting the help that they needed. And here in a few, when I have some time to decompress and really look back at all of my notes, the statistics and the outcomes that they have are staggering. So, be on the lookout if you don't follow me on Facebook or sign up for my newsletter. I will be posting that, too, because there is real data behind this model, and I'm excited to share it with you. I just don't have it right now, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just want to recognize, unless you are going to, about D-Day is tomorrow, celebration, and it's an extra special day for me and our family, if I can just share the briefest of stories, the heroicness, and you all know all that, but Mom was the, she had five brothers, older brothers that all fought in World War II in different branches, and her dad, my grandfather, grew up in Abilene, right next, right across the street from Eisenhower. And so, during the war, we lost, or Mom lost one brother and went, flew off the Lexington. He was a pilot and went down in the Pacific, and we've never recovered his remains. But I'm sharing that story because on June 25, which was only 20 days after June 6, Grandma and Grandpa got a handwritten note from Dwight Eisenhower, who's orchestrating the theater and the European theater, and took time to write a note of regrets and honors to, and we've got that letter, our family does, and we gave the original back to the Eisenhower Museum, but it's a special time for us as a family, and so, anyway, and so, I honor Mr. Eisenhower. His leadership was pretty amazing. For, if you're a handwritten note person, it does have an impact, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a couple of comments before we move along. First of all, I'm very pleased that Commissioner Cruz got to go down to San Antonio. A number of us are also going back down to San Antonio in August to be able to take a look at the facility down there. It's really the model of our common care that we've got here in city right now, although ours is on a very miniature scale compared to what they put together in San Antonio. She mentioned, Commissioner Cruz mentioned Leon, and he's the godfather of this, the individual that thought all this idea up on how to put all of these services in one spot to be able to take care of the folks. It is a community effort. It's truly, this efforts for mental health, behavioral health, drug abuse, it really is in our wheelhouse for Sejuac County because we are the Board of Health, so obviously, we take the lead on this, but it doesn't mean that the rest of the community is not involved in this. When I went down, we had members of the city council attend with me, and the city council is involved in this. Our nonprofits are involved in this, so across the board, folks are working this each and every day. It's a huge issue for our sheriff because we have people that are serving time in the jail that probably shouldn't be in the jail. They should be in some type of facility to be able to work their mental health issues. So, the sheriff is deeply involved in everything that we do. So, anything that we can take a look at in the future, I think is going to be beneficial to us, and I appreciate the fact that now we have a couple of commissioners that have been down there, and before long, I think almost all of us will be down to see what the model is that we can aspire to, so thank you for going down on that. Also, thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, for mentioning D-Day. It's a time when we need to make sure that we recognize those that gave all so that we can live the freedoms that we're living today and the people around the world have the freedoms that they're living today. The men and women that wore the uniform then, that gave their lives, the men and women that are wearing the uniform today are preserving that history and tradition and legacy that we have as a result of the men that fought and died on beaches in Normandy 75 years ago. We sincerely appreciate their service. Finally, I want to mention that we talked about the MAPC in detail, but truly, on Thursday, it is going to be a busy day. We had several things that have been going on, and one of those is the wind and solar energy projects, and we had a meeting at the zoo recently in March, I believe. energy projects, and we had a meeting at the zoo recently, in March, I believe, at the end of March, where we invited public comment to talk about wind and solar energy. I had a meeting with my Citizens Advisory Board last Monday night where we discussed it, but it's going to come before the Metropolitan Planning Commission on Thursday at 1:30 in the Reagan Building. And again, it's an open meeting, the public is invited to comment on that, just as they are in any open meeting that we have with the government. So if anyone has comments that they'd like to discuss with wind and solar, and the ideas that have been put together by our Planning Department, they're welcome to come to the Reagan Building at 1:30. I don't see anything else that needs to come before the Commission at this time. We have no need for an executive session today for the Board of County Commissioners. So I'd like to, unless there's anything else, before I adjourn, does any other Commissioner have anything? Seeing nothing, I'd like to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners meeting for June 5th, call the order of the governing body of Fire District Number One for June 5th. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Does anyone today have anything that they'd like to speak on public agenda for the Fire District? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, fire meeting minutes of May 8th, 2019.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from May 8th and May 22nd. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles County Manager's office recommend approval of consent item C, Charles, this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve consent item Charlie?
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Executive session.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'd like to move that the Board of County Commissioners sitting as the governing body of the Fire District Number One recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 10:05, under the justification of preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the Fire District, and in order to protect the county's financial interest and right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position.
I'll second the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
We're in recess until 10:05.